Good being 6:03 AM, according to my watch, I'm gonna call this meeting 1,600 to order. And, um, we need to take a roll call?
No.
No. If you call it open, you're good.
Okay, so, um, uh, going to standard and report, let us have a motion to approve school committee minutes for meeting number 1598 of February 4th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Dennis. Anybody have any changes? Seeing no hands up, we'll have a roll call vote. Uh, Art?
Yes.
Uh, Jeffrey?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Uh, Danil?
Yep.
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Uh, Dennis?
Was that Janice or Dennis?
It was you.
Uh, Dennis not here at the moment, so anything that sounds like you is you for now. Uh, Bonnie?
Yes.
And Jane, yes. Uh, thank you for unanimous vote. Uh, I'll take a motion, um, for the minutes, school committee meeting number 1,599 of February 18th.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Art. Uh, any changes? Question? See no hands up. Uh, Art?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
And Jane, yes, unanimous. All right, minutes have been accounted for, we're going on to enrollment.
So we have the enrollment, um, worksheets in your packet and for March 1st, as of March 1st, we have picked up one more student, so we are at 659. And this is the direction we like to be going in, so, um, that's where we are as of March 1st.
Any questions for Beth?
Yeah, uh, sorry, I'm not raising my hand. Um, Beth, just on the, um, detail breakout, these are, uh, the 20 to 21 transfer outs. Those are all, that's for the entire school year, right?
Correct.
Okay, and, um, has there been any, like, do we look like we're gonna get these kids who dropped out? Are we gonna, is there any progress to hopefully getting the two that are in those tracks coming back?
Well, I think if you're talking about if they're home schooled for the time, I believe that there's a very strong possibility, if not, we've been told they're coming back, um, right now. This is just the choice they've made for this time of the year.
Okay.
Uh, miscellaneous correspondence.
I had a question, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dennis.
That's all right. Uh, uh, just following along with what Jeff had just asked, uh, have, Beth, have, have we gotten much response back yet on the, the questionnaire that you sent out and around about attendance and so forth?
So I, I'm gonna do a full report next week because we gave everybody until, um, Sunday, so yes.
I can't remember what the window was on that, sorry.
We gave everybody till Sunday, that's fine, and I'll talk about it a little bit more in my report, which will be super short, but very riveting, um, and, uh, but we did have quite a few. I think we already had, um, at least 200 and 260 or something. We had quite a few already, so there'll be lots of fun things to share next week.
Good.
All right, so.
There is this line.
Yes, there is.
So all this included in, did you not put it there? We did not put it there, never mind. I did not mean that, go on. It's under other business, okay. Sorry.
This one?
Yeah, that's for later.
Okay, sorry. Okay.
Apologize.
Is there a student representative report tonight?
There will be one, right?
Uh, here where we landed?
Oh, no. Let's do spotlight.
But we're hoping to have some spotlight, um,
Instead.
With our class itself.
Okay, so.
We'll go back, please.
We will go back when our student spotlight, uh, lights up.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
You didn't tell.
And if you would be willing to help me notice that she's there, that will be helpful.
Yes.
All right, uh, I'm open to public comment at this point on items on this agenda. Please raise your hand if you would like to make a public comment. Uh, yeah, I can't read your name from my distance. Can you identify yourself?
Yes, my name is Alina Sue, and I live in Eggermont. Um, I have a couple of questions, and I'm not sure exactly how this works, but I, I was assuming that if I raised some questions at a future meeting at some point, they could be discussed, is that correct?
Yeah, you can give me future agenda items, and you may find that it, what you are interested in is covered in some, one of our reports from one of our people, so.
Okay.
Interested in, if you would like to.
So, I have three questions that are all sort of related, and they're based on the anti-racism, anti-bias strategic planning document that was included in the packet a couple of meetings ago.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, um, the first question is what policies are and should be in place when there is a disruption to community safety for students? So if there's an incident, how is it handled, and how should it be handled? Have you considered, the second question is, have you considered a policy about repair and restorative practices being a district-wide commitment?
Okay.
And the third question is, one of your commitments is to ensure we create a welcoming community for all students. And the question is, if somebody does not feel welcome, how would you know? Is there a mechanism, a safe mechanism for people to let somebody know that they don't feel safe?
Thank you very much for your, your very good questions, and I have them written down, and if they're not going, we will, I will, I have your contact information, or you watch the, um, the agendas every, uh, meeting, you'll see where this is gonna come up. It's likely to come up when policy, uh, the policy subcommittee speaks, or when there's a re, uh, a report from our, uh, anti-bias and anti-racist, um, task force, I, I mean, action plan, so we're likely to discuss this, uh, because we care about all these things.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other hands up? All right, um, so, new business, I think our new business was the budget. Well, we didn't put anything that we needed to vote on in this section, so we wouldn't overload ourselves. And that's the next meeting next week, likely to have, uh, actionable items. Uh, I don't think we have any unfinished business, um, we seem to be catching up. Um, and do we have a curriculum and professional development coordinators report?
We did not pull one out for this evening.
All right, so item seven, and the business manager's report is item eight, and I do see Chris is here.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
Okay, so we only have one item tonight, and that's a fairly small warrants report with just two warrants on it. Uh, we have the first warrant from the end of January, that was in the amount of about $155,000. The majority of that were in the payroll taxes, federal, state, and Medicare, about $98,000 was for that. We also had some retirement payments in the amount of $17,000. And then the rest was just various monthly expenses that we paid. Uh, as far as the February 19th warrant, that was a larger warrant for $330,000. About half of that was for the transportation bill. Another $55,000 was for MTRS payments for the teacher's retirement. We also had oil deliveries of about $20,000. And then, again, various monthly expenses just made up the remainder of the warrant. Uh, it's pretty straightforward on this one. I don't know if anybody has any questions?
Motion to, uh, accept the warrants for March 4th, 2021 as presented.
Thank you, Jeffrey, a second?
Second.
Second from Arthur. Uh, do a roll call vote. Uh, Art?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Uh, Danil?
Yep.
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
And Jane, yes, that's unanimous. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
No, uh, no grants or gifts?
Not this week, no.
And no budget transfers?
That's correct, we have none.
We did a lot of those last time.
Yes, we did.
Now we're on item nine, uh, business with district member towns. Is this where we talk about this?
Uh, yes, so, uh, included in your packet, uh, I just wanted to, uh, share formally to the entire committee that we, uh, did receive, uh, the full $125,000 grant, um, for the Fund Code 191 School District Regionalization Grant that, um, we wrote on behalf of Southern Berkshire and Berkshire Hills as part of our discussions and ongoing work, um, uh, on all sorts of, uh, potential scenarios, uh, that could occur between the two districts. So I included that in your packet for, um, for your review.
Um, I want to add to that, there was a meeting of, um, a sort of an ad hoc subcommittee of the regional school district planning board to talk about amending the amount of money that got, uh, asked of the individual towns, um, down, uh, since we got our full allotment. Thank you very much, Beth, for writing a very excellent proposal and giving time that you didn't have, uh, to get that done. So the, the ask to the, the eight towns is going to go down, uh, proposals going forward at the regional school district planning board meeting next Tuesday, the 9th, uh, to lower that to 8,000 per pound from 15,000. And I really encourage any of you who are interested in this process to get on the call and listen to the proceedings, because at that meeting, we're gonna have to talk about how we find the best people to do the work for us, and what work is it we really want to get done? And, um, I know that we've got some intelligent people on our committee who are not actually on the board, who, um, might wanna listen into that, so, um, I will be reporting on that on the 11th, um, but if you wanna be in the action, uh, it's, um, Monday at, I mean, Tuesday at 5:30, I believe.
And there's a very short window to spend, $125,000, so.
Right, it has to be spent by the end of June unless, uh, a legislative bill goes through to give us an extension.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I have hands up. I wasn't watching which went first. Bonnie?
Uh, I just would like to say, Beth, thank you very much for the amount of work that you put in to this. It's not like you already did not have a full plate. So, thank you very much.
And Carrie Anne?
Uh, nice work, Beth. Congratulations. Um, uh, I have a hard time finding where the links are for the meetings for the regional school district planning board. Can you remind me where those are? And then I also have a question, is this, um, is this grant a reimbursable grant, or is it all awarded upfront?
Um, we did not administer the first one, so, uh, we're the lead this time around, so I'm not 100% sure, but, um, I think, I think we're granted all 125. I'm pretty sure we're granted all 125. It's not reimbursable or matching.
Thank you.
Hey, I have, Carrie Anne, question, go to Berkshire Hills. Go to the Berkshire Hills Regional School District website.
I'm posting it to the, um, I'm posting it to the, the chat.
But we, we have it on ours.
We have it on our website, too.
Yeah. It doesn't, you don't have to go to Berkshire Hills. It's all, all the meetings are posted on ours.
Oh, the abundance of enthusiasm for that information. I appreciate it.
If you follow Jeff's link, you'll be able to get all of the reports from the past. I, Beth, I didn't find the reports on our website, so.
On our website. I don't, you can't get all the reports, as far as I know.
So.
Part of the funding for this grant, uh, that I, I just put together is for website development.
Exactly.
For a joint new website, this group, so, um, just so you know.
Yes, it will be much more satisfactory. Go ahead.
I just have a follow-up question. Um, so then, the total amount that was awarded, because I saw in the letter, it was, it was, um, addressed to, um, both school districts, but Beth, you, you just said, so then, um, Southern Berkshire is like, is the lead applicant, so we are administering all of the funding?
Correct. We'll be responsible for it and, and manage. Yeah.
Great, thanks.
All right, so, um, any other questions, comments about this item?
Ready.
Since we can go on to subcommittee reports, uh, we have some work to do there.
I'm just listening to the school committee meeting.
A dog has just like, joined our group. All right, so, um, Jeffrey, do you have anything that you want to add from finance committee?
Uh, we basically are up to date from the, the, uh, presentation, but that's it, so, nothing to report.
Jeffrey, thank you so much, given your incredibly busy schedule, that, um, you are on top of it, thank you.
To the, to the committee, by the way, and, um, Dennis has been really helpful, too, like, um, really appreciate everybody's support on the committee.
Uh, Dennis, do you have a policy subcommittee report?
Yes, but I, I do have to interrupt my report to say that, uh, I wanted to check if that youngest Van Ruden kid that I see sitting there with the collar on, uh, is, is he enrolled?
We enroll anybody we can find.
Okay, I was just, I was just checking on that, you know, I wanted to make sure we're getting all the smart-looking ones, you know? That's, so anyway, let's, let's, uh, uh, we, we do have some policies to go over tonight. Uh, I erroneously, in our last meeting, gave you for first read four policies. There's really only three that are, that are now, uh, uh, of the four that I gave you that are for second read. Uh, the one that I gave you on face mask coverings, uh, I, I hadn't read my minutes yet, before that got put on the list, uh, because, uh, basically in the minutes, that was one where the, the policy subcommittee said, well, we need to do some more research on that one. So that's gotta go back to the policy subcommittee one more time before it even makes it to first read. So let's, let's do the three that we got. The first one is one that, uh, we've been wrestling with for a long time, and that's E E A G, the student transportation in private vehicles. Basically, we had a policy, uh, and, uh, basically, we have replaced it with a very simplistic policy that, that is one sentence long, that basically says for E E A G, student transportation in private vehicles, only school buses or school tied, school-owned vans will be used for the transportation of students participating in co-curricular or extracurricular activities, period. That's it. Very straightforward, very simple.
Uh, do I have a motion to, uh, accept this amended, um, policy?
So moved.
Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, any questions, or, for Dennis, or the policy subcommittee?
Is this the second read?
Yes, it is.
This is the second read. If, if we vote this, yes, that becomes our firm policy.
I have one pointed question.
Jeffrey?
Am I to understand, with, this is private vehicles, if owned by the district, but school buses through our school bus provider is okay? This, it doesn't affect that policy?
Well, school buses could be provided by anybody, basically. It could be Messiney, or it could be anybody else, basically, the way it's written, uh, uh, or school-owned vans.
Or school-owned vans, okay.
Right.
Which includes the marshmallow.
Yes, that, that, we, we had discussion that, yes, that does include the marshmallow buses.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Properly called vans.
Bonnie, you have your hand up?
Yes. Um, how does this impact when, a couple of things, one, are we saying if there are only two or three kids doing, uh, co-op for football or hockey, they can go to the site in a parent's car?
No, it doesn't say that at all. It's, it says that basically a parent can't haul students in their car other than their own student. I mean, a parent always has the legal right to take their kid wherever they want to take them to. Okay, right? You can't argue about that, I don't think. But, what, what, the whole purpose of the policy is meant to prevent is that a parent cannot be, uh, given the responsibility of taking more than, you know, taking, say, two or three kids to, to a sports event.
That's what my question is. So this is saying they can't do that anymore, right?
Correct.
And the next question, how does it cover things such as taking, um, the van to, um, Wausauak, and then taking a train?
You, you lost me on that one.
They take the marshmallow bus to Wausauak, and then they're going for a co-curricular, extracurricular activity, and then taking Metro North to New York City.
It is not relating to.
That's not.
It's not related to a school-sponsored event. What it was really related to is a staff member driving a student individually in a car.
Okay, so in no way would this preclude the scenario I just said. The marshmallow bus takes the kids to Wausauak, they get on Metro North, we're not.
We're not saying.
That, okay, great.
All right.
One, one other question, if you don't.
All right, go.
Um, so Dennis or Beth, um, does this mean that, like, families can choose to carpool together on their own volition?
I, we don't stop people from carpooling now. I, I have no authority for a family to say they can't pick up and go to school, but it can't be a school-sponsored. I can't tell them to take, they're driving to hockey practice, and they're taking other people's kids. I can't say that. But if people do that on their own volition, that's not our school's business.
Got it, so it's specifically to set stuff. Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
Thank you for all those clarifications. Are we comfortable to vote, I think? So, um, I love my alphabetical order, it's so fun. Uh, Art?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
I'm on the meeting chat, I'm at the meeting. Thank you.
Hi, Dennis. Uh, Danil?
Yes.
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Uh, Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
And Jane, yes. You'll get the vote next time, Dennis, you just came on, right?
You're talking to me?
Bonnie, we, we were voting on a, um, a new policy which you weren't party to, so I'm gonna let you hop in on the next vote, okay?
Listen, Jane, I just wanna, I have to express my frustration with this. This happened to me the last time. I've been on for the last 25 minutes trying to get on, and this is, I don't know what is wrong, but I cannot get on with the message I'm getting from the, from the district. I, I can't get on. It's only when Carrie Anne sends me the connection that I can get on. And this is very frustrating. I don't, I just have to express it because I'm, I wanna go to bed.
I'm sorry, Dennis, it is so frustrating. That's why I'm here instead of home.
What happened to me last week?
Yeah, yeah.
It's because you're not using the live link.
It also happened to me, and, um, I, uh, Janice, um, the way that I have now, once, when a Zoom link is in, is in a Word document, and when you then have to download that document to see it, which is what, because of the way that our email works, I always have to download a document to be able to see it on my screen. Um, it then becomes inactive, and you're not able to click on it. And so what I do each time, what I do each time is I go to, um, our district website and just open up the, um, the, the posting on that site, and that's where I get the live link. And that's what I then cut and paste and send to you. That's the only way that I'm able to get on as well, so it's not just you that's having this problem.
Okay, thank you, Carrie Anne. Thank you.
All right, um, Dennis, the next, uh, policy that you would like us to vote on?
Uh, the, uh, the next, the next one is, uh, I'm not gonna read this one. It was sent to you. It's, uh, you know, a little over two pages, and it basically, uh, was, was again, one that kinda came out as COVID came on, if you will, and this is I H B H E, remote learning.
Uh, do I have a motion?
So moved.
From Art, second?
Second.
What was, what was that?
Jeff.
Okay, so does anybody have any questions from Dennis, for Dennis, on this particular, um, policy? Uh, Jeffrey?
Dennis, and it's kinda conflating with I H B H E E. Um, I'm curious, going through the two different policies, are, is there anything, like, materially different between the two?
Uh, you lost me on that, I'm sorry, what?
Um, there's two policies, I H B E, sorry, I H B H E dash.
There's I H B H E, which is remote learning. Then, as often happens in policies, there's kinda like a, here's a follow-on, uh, here's, here's just some more info, and that's the one that's I H B H E dash E, remote learning addendum.
Yeah. So going through the two documents, and I think they look very similar. And just for clarity's sake, is there any, like, really material, can you point out the really material difference between the two? Because without doing, uh, their flat files for us to look at, I just, I wanna make sure.
Yeah, they're, they are almost exactly alike, and I, 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 why, how they came out that way, I have no idea.
So what is the material difference between the two policies, people?
I haven't, I haven't been able to find any. I think what we should do.
I would like to.
Go ahead, go ahead, Carrie.
Uh, um, Dennis, I'd like for us to consider looking back over the minutes, um, in terms of the addendum, because I was fairly certain that we, um, chose, there was no motion to pass the addendum because of both its replication and its somewhat, um, toolkit structure, um, that we weren't particularly, um, interested in it, in the policy subcommittee, but we were interested in putting. But we were interested in putting forth the remote learning, um, policy in and of itself, not the addendum.
Thank you, Carrie Anne.
Can we table this for Carrie Anne's comments?
Well, she's saying that, the way I heard it is that the remote learning, we should consider, but the addendum, we might not. Is that what you were trying to say, Carrie Anne?
That's my interpretation of what Carrie Anne was saying.
It's what Carrie Anne said.
Right, so, um, Dennis, you wanna propose how, how, as the chair of the committee?
I, I propose that we move forward and take a vote on I H B H E dash remote learning. Uh, we did, we did have some discussion. I don't have the minutes in front of me to go back and review. But, uh, you know, I, I, I do disagree a little bit with Carrie Anne in that, uh, uh, I, I thought, I thought we made kind of an inclusive vote on the both, basically. I'd have to go back and look at the minutes to, you know, to ascertain that, to be quite frank.
So for clarity tonight, in order to accomplish something, it seems like you clearly do want us to vote on the remote learning because there's no, uh, disagreement about whether we should do that one or not. Is that correct?
Uh, well, that's my opinion, yes. But I'm opinional one.
Yeah, what about you, Carrie Anne?
Yeah, I agree. Let's vote on it.
Okay, so those people have your hands up. Uh, do you need your questions answered before this vote? Do they have to do with the vote? Yes, Bonnie?
Okay, thank you. Um, given, um, given what's been said and it, I would support what Jeff said and that we're meeting again in a week. And I would prefer to table it. And maybe the policy committee can send us a short memo explaining the differences. So I, my inclination is to table this for one week now that I'm confused about it.
To table what? I H, I H B H E dash E? Is that what you're saying, Bonnie?
Yeah, uh, both of them. If you're saying that one is redundant.
The, the way, the way they read now, they are exactly the same.
So if they read, I'm, I'm getting more confused. If they read exactly the same, why do we have two of them?
I don't have an answer for you on that one. I mean, it might have been my error in, in copying, uh, I H B H E dash E. Or it might have been a misprint in the policy as it came down from M A S C. I don't know.
I would prefer, again, then, to say that we table it for clarification. We're meeting in one week.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with you, other than I disagree that we would, should table them both. I think we ought to go ahead. If we're comfortable with I H B H E, we ought to go ahead and pass that one or not pass it as the vote turns out. But let's table I H B H E dash E while I do some more investigative work on it.
Sounds like a plan.
There's a motion on the floor to, I see we have our, here, uh, there's a motion on the floor for
I'll make the formal motion then. If this is what Dennis, you're saying, that
We have a motion. There is a motion for H I H B H E already. So can we vote on that right now? If you're
That's where we started down the path of, yes.
In favor of that one has a chance to say so now. And then
Just Dennis, that's the one that the policy committee is saying it would like us to vote on. Correct? Great.
Okay, so it's been, a motion has been made and seconded. I'm, I'm gonna take a real poll vote. Hannah, do you still have a question about that?
Um, I just, I wanted to say that if we're concerned that the language is identical in the two, are we sure that the one everyone's been offered to read is the one we're voting on?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so, um, uh, Art?
Yes.
Uh, Jeffrey?
Yes.
Hannah?
Um, yes, and I, I don't think I registered a vote, um, for the transportation policy, but I wanted to vote yes on that also.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Danell?
Yes.
Uh, Janice?
Yes.
Uh, and Janice?
Me? Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, uh, Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Uh, Bonnie?
Yes.
Jane, yes, okay. So, um, rather than have to table something, uh, how about we just leave the other one? Do we have to table the one since it's on the agenda or do we, can we just skip over it for now?
Just table.
Okay, so we're gonna table I H B H E dash E. So the next time that the policy subcommittee can meet and find out if we need to step up or not. So the date is not determined in case you can't meet by next week. And you have to vote today? Uh, I don't know. Uh, Carrie Anne?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to have an opportunity before we left the policy subcommittee line. Um, last time that we met, we didn't have an opportunity, um, to, uh, report back on, um, the policy, um, work regarding the anti-bias and anti-racism action plan. And so, um, I'm sorry that Alina isn't here. But, um, just to be able to say that we, um, John and Hannah and I have met to, um, start, um, dividing up the policy manual to, um, be reading it between the three of us and developing a framework for evaluating the policies, uh, for, um, both racism and bias. And so this way we can then prioritize them for, um, the ones that need our immediate attention. And so, once we have some of these materials together, we can then report back to you even more. But I just wanted to offer that for now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carrie.
All right. Uh, Oh, Nadia, welcome.
Let me get that. Do you wanna go on the floor or not?
Hello, thank you.
Jane?
Now, Mr. Carpenter would like to introduce you, Nadia.
So we are, uh, happy to have Nadia with us to talk a little bit about her experience with the Model G twenty summit, um, which brings together, uh, thousands of students. Um, this year, I think they had more than forty, uh, students from more than forty countries. Um, and they, this year's topic was climate change. And, and so Nadia had a per, chance to participate representing, uh, Mount Everett. And, uh, she's gonna talk a little bit about her experience. And I'll let her, her share the award that she won, uh, as part of that. So Nadia, thank you for being with us.
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad to be here and talk a little bit about, um, the G twenty summit. So it, um, happened the week before, or the Friday before break. Um, we met, you know, I, I was representing Russia as the Minister of Energy. Um, and it was essentially, um, a, well, it was a Model G twenty. So you may be familiar with G twenty. It's like the group of twenty, um, world superpowers. So our goal for our meeting was to, you know, mitigate the effects of climate change. And so I was in it, my other Russian ministers, uh, were from Mexi, I had someone from Mexico in my group and three people from China and someone from India. And so we all talked and, uh, collaborated on policies. And that took the course of, um, basically that week over break, we met. And, um, and then the twentieth, um, we had a culmination where we heard every other country's, um, policies that they made and we shared our own. Um, and so I was awarded with, uh, the exceptional Minister of Energy for my cohort. So, um, that was a really exciting moment for me, um, considering there were people from all over the world. Um, but it was a really great experience to, um, not only talk about climate change and different policies that are realistic that we can implement, but also to, you know, get to know people from everywhere and hear different ideas.
Thank you. Um, Dennis, your hand is up. Did you wanna ask a question?
Um,
Yes, uh, the, the question I had for Nadia was, where, where was this held?
It was on Zoom. Um, and so we had some meetings with, we would meet with everybody. Um, but it was like four hundred people. And so that was mainly like informational, uh, but then we broke out into smaller groups, obviously.
You've come a long way from when I first knew you as be, as a, uh, early learner of genealogy to, to where you're now head of the Russian, uh, you know, uh, uh, energy group. That's, that's pretty, that's pretty good, pretty good climbing.
Thank you, yeah.
Congratulations.
Uh, Bonnie?
I think Janice was ahead of me.
No, Janice was way behind Bonnie. I, I, I had about the issue before.
Oh, okay.
That E, 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 no, I H.
All right, in that case, first of all, congratulations and congratulations on representing us so well. Um, can you say, were there any plus sides to having to do this over Zoom? And what was the big negative, if any?
Well, I would say spending four hours, you know, in, on Zoom is, is a lot, but there were breaks. And, um, fortunately, things were running on Eastern time. So I got off at eleven, but, uh, like, the Minister of Transportation was from India. He had to get on the call at four AM. So that's, you know, if we were in person, we would all at least be waking up at the same time. Um, but I think the positive is, I, they, um, they used to hold these in person or they do actually hold some events in person. Um, there is like an opportunity, if you are selected, to go to Italy. But I probably, you know, wouldn't be able to go somewhere just because of money or time or logistics. Um, so I think because it was online, I was actually able to do it.
Interesting. And do, have you been in contact with any, since then, with any of the people you met?
Yes, actually, the, the head of state who's from Mexico, um, participates in Mall of UN. And, you know, we have Mall of UN Club, which I'm in at school. And she was saying that they're having an event this summer and they might invite our school to participate.
Thank you so much. I love hearing this. Thank you.
Terrific, Jeff?
But it sounds like a really great experience and glad you had it. Um, you prompted me when you said like, uh, if you are invited to, although there's a financial restriction, probably do it. Um, I'm wondering if this is more addressed to the committee, uh, um, especially with more experience. Do we have a way of maybe connecting Nadia to the Google Fund or anything like that for funding if she does get invited to go there?
Well, I'll say, um, quickly, just that normally there is a, um, uh, for this event, I didn't have to pay, um, which I'm very grateful for. So the funding, whatever that was conjured up, um, I'm grateful for that.
Uh, Bonnie, do you have information on that?
Yes, I absolutely do. It's so funny that you mentioned this. There is, um, a grant, maybe, I don't know how many applicants there were, but it's only open to eleventh and twelfth graders from Mount Everett. It's two thousand dollars. And it's for this coming summer and it's related to environmental issues. And it comes through the, um, Berkshire-Tecnic Foundation. So maybe Mr. Carpenter can do some follow-up. I just found it online. Unfortunately, it lists March one, but I don't know who applied from our school. So maybe, um, Mr. Carpenter can help you on possibly getting that. It's, it sounds like it's exactly what you wanna do and the money's sitting there and it's only from Mount Everett.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's go on to our next item.
Thank you, Nadia. Really appreciate.
So much.
Thank you for having me.
All right. Um, where was I? We are at Community Relations Public Schools Advocacy. Is there a report? You know, that, did you wanna speak about, um, your last meeting or, or, there hasn't been one since our last time that we got together?
Nope, uh, there hasn't, but I'm formulating the, for this next meeting next week. Um, if the committee members, I, I see Janice, that's Eugene and Carrie Anne, um, check your emails tonight, because I realized that I, when we set this meeting up, there's a slight schedule conflict. So I'm gonna just email out a quick thing to see if we can switch the date. If not, you can just go on without me and I'll do, and Bonnie, sorry, you're there too. So just check your emails tonight or tomorrow morning. Um, because if it does work out that we can switch the day, then I can put the agenda out in timely manner.
Clarification, um, that you can attend the meeting next that you had set up? Is that what you're telling us?
Yes. Okay. So I just wanted to alert you that I know not everyone checks their emails regularly for a school committee, but check tonight or tomorrow, so you can make sure that it's okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, Bonnie, do you have anything for negotiations, subcommittee?
Uh, the only thing I have is we will begin, be beginning some discussions related to, um, full school openings under the guidance of our attorney and Beth. And no details exist because nothing has begun.
On alert, and, uh, the other two committees listed have not met yet. And I do have it in my notes that they do need to convene because we have executive minutes to review. And we have to get a strategy for the evaluation of our superintendent before we find ourselves at the end of the year already.
It's happening.
It's happening. Okay, um, I don't have anything to report except, um, it's so wonderful working with this group of people who seem to wanna work and get things done. And, um, I really appreciate everybody's cooperative approach. And, um, the, the model that's being set by our administration about collaboration and dedication really resonates in the work that we get to do because we know the good feelings, um, that we all share. So, um, Bonnie, did you wanna say something about that?
Yes, I do. Um, did you get, happen to get any feedback on the handbook at all? Because I said I would reconcile the pagination and everything and
Thank you, Bonnie. I got one thing from Janice and I got nothing else. So this is a good time to say, one of the, the, Janice was asking for some different terminology on our, uh, anti-bias document. And I'm wondering, as a group, several of those documents, uh, were made before these members were on the committee. And, um, we are going to be making adjustments to the document as we go along. Because some were written in twenty seventeen and we may be wanting to amend them. And I'd like to see it as a living document. And if we approve it as is, that does not mean it's gonna be static. Because when we are doing our anti-bias, anti-racist work, we may come upon language that we share that we want to change. And, uh, so I think we need to come to grips with how, how we treat this document. And I'm gonna suggest that we, um, possibly approve it as is once all, um, no substantial edits are put in and then go back into individual documents in, in workshop settings to maybe tune them better into who we are now. So
So given that, Jane, can you just said So given that, Jane, can you just set. A deadline and then send me anything you have, and then I'll work on the pagination and. We look at it as something that we adjust, the way we adjust our policies.
Okay, um, well, how about two more weeks, just to be generous? And, uh, um, and then we'll, we'll have a version which we will keep alive. And changes necessary.
Sounds like a plan, so I will make a motion that, um. All changes will be sent to Jane, all changes to the handbook. Will be sent to Jane by the eighteenth of March, and she will forward those to. Me. For any adaptation, which I will get to everybody by April first. That's my long motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion about it?
Sorry about not getting back to you guys.
Uh, Janice, I see your hand.
Yes, I, I don't understand, um, what you said versus what Bonnie is saying. I thought you said that we would take it as is and work in the future, and Bonnie is asking for changes to be submitted. So.
Uh, okay, so I think what, um, what I'm meaning is. If we're missing anything, if any of our policies, um, or. Uh, procedures are misrepresented, um. I think that's more what I'm looking for rather than. Smaller changes in semantics, or, I mean, what you're talking about, Dennis, is something. I think we should sit down and talk as a group about that. I don't feel that we can change the title of a document that was. Created, um, until we all look at the whole document, and I would prefer. Um, to do that, take the time that we're going to be having to discuss this, um, through workshop. That's, that's the difference. Is that clear? Does anybody understand what I'm saying? Yeah, okay.
I'm old.
No. So am I, Dennis, uh, so I, I'd like to vote on this, uh. Jeffrey, what do you, you have something?
No, I just, it's, it's more of a comment. I understand where Janice is coming from, um, I'm wondering if like the. Splitting the hairs is, I think there's urgency from my perspective. Of getting a statement out in the public that we can start saying it's out there. I think we have a commitment from this body to not keep it as a static document, but to improve on it. But we shouldn't let the pursuit of perfection prevent us from getting out a statement that can hold us accountable to work that has already been done. And that we can start working towards the next draft or the next iteration of it. Um, that's kind of what I'm hearing, it's kind of like merging the. I understand where you're coming from, Dennis, and I also understand where, uh. Where Jane is possibly coming from as well.
All right, so, um, you're, both of your hands are still up, uh, let's, let's have a vote for getting this. This, um, this iteration out there on our website. And then as soon as we possibly can make changes to any of the pages that people feel need changing, we will. We won't stall, we'll move forward. Uh, Carrie Anne?
Just for clarification, we are talking about the handbook right now, correct?
Yeah, and.
Okay.
Was talking about the titling of the anti-bias, anti-racist page. And changing one or two words in the statement to, um. To change the feel of the statement and which I think needs input from everybody, rather than. When Bonnie made an edit to, um, how we go about doing negotiations, because what was in there was. Absolutely wrong, so we needed. Got it?
I got it, just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Okay, so although, uh, can I call them a question here, or I see Dennis's hands up?
Yeah, the, the only comment I was going to make is that there, there is a lot of commute, a lot of con- uh, confusion about. This document of which we speak, and, and I, and I think that, uh, you know, a, a good thing has happened tonight in terms of there's some. Firm dates that have been set for response, okay, the, the, but before we are all done. If this is going to go on our website and represent, this is in effect a version of. Because, because my interpretation of what this document is, is it's a, it's a, uh, it's a quote policy statement of how the. School committee itself operates, uh, that, that's kind of my, my reading of what it reads like. If, if that is the case, we need to get that first draft in front of us. At where we actually vote on that, that's, yes, that's what we all agree to before we put it on the, on the, on the homepage of the district.
All right, my final say about this is. If you all want to sit down at another workshop meeting and go through every page. And vote on everybody agreeing to everything, I have no objection. We, we started this work. A year ago, and, um. It's a big job to go, like, our norms, we could look at again, we could look at our protocols, we could look at that again. There are lots of documents that are in there that were passed several years ago, um. And it's your document, so I'm not, I'm just trying to get to a conclusion that isn't. Uh, everybody's time, um. My opinion is this really clarifies to a lot of people who do not understand what the school committee does and doesn't do. It's a tool for both the public and for us and for prospective new members, and the sooner we get it out there. The best, so, um. Bonnie's got a motion on the floor. I'm kind of hearing that you all haven't read it that carefully even yet to know what you think about it, even though it's been sent. Several months ago, so I'm not sure what you want from me on this.
May I speak to the motion?
Yes, you can.
The whole idea is, Dennis, when you made comments. The comments were structured in such a way, I could say, oh, wow, he's right, this doesn't make any sense what's in here. So it enabled me to deal with the whole area of negotiations, because you said, this is not what we do. The objective of setting the eighteen is to say to everybody, read through it. If you have any comments. Get them to Jane, between the eighteenth and the first, I will re-edit it. I know that. Pagination is an issue. I addressed really not putting my opinion in. But by, but, you know, dealing with issues of language and editing. And then all we need to do is put like a preamble or something which says. We view this as a dynamic document for annual review, and we can get it up there after. You know, we, uh, vote on it after April first, so that's my reason for this motion.
All right, and we have.
Everybody, the eighteenth is a deadline to get comments to Jane, Jane gets them to me, I have April one as a deadline. To get it back for the next school committee meeting.
Yeah, April first is our, is our meeting after, uh, the one next week, so. Let's take a vote, how many people want to proceed in this manner, all right? That's what we're voting on. Um, I think it has been seconded, I think what Bonnie said is not much different than what she said before, just clear. All right, uh, Art?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Uh, Danielle?
Yes.
Uh, Dennis Sears?
Yes.
Janet?
I abstain, because I'm still not clear.
Okay, thank you, Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Uh, Bonnie?
Yes.
And Jane, yeah, okay, thank you.
Jane, may I make one last?
Excuse me, can I say something? Um, I, I know I'm not being nice tonight, but, um. If, if maybe a little, maybe a preface that states what you just said, Jane, at the very beginning. Would that make sense, something about what you said, the fact that this is a living document?
That's what I just said.
Is that, you see, I'm telling you I'm in trouble.
That's what I just said, I'll put in, I said, use the word preamble.
Okay.
Preface, yes, exactly what you said, yes.
Say, Bonnie, that's because you don't use my language, that's what it is.
Okay, well, you have to, you have to teach me.
Okay, I'm going superintendent's report.
I, I, I'm kind of afraid, but, um.
I don't know, but you don't have to say anything, but you do need to say something.
I do need to say one thing, I do need to say one thing, um, we, we didn't have a, we didn't have a lot of, um. Bandwidth left right now, but as you can tell, um, the commissioner got out in front of us last week and decided that, um. Uh, he's going full force, uh, forward with looking at the possibility of, as you all know, um, reopening. Um, schools or, or talking about changing structured learning time, whichever way you want to put it. Um, and he was supposedly going to be headed in front of the State Board of Education around the third week in March, however. I'm looking at the agenda for tomorrow and he's going tomorrow, so, um, we were on our game. And did what we were supposed to do, which is to get our community survey out, um, which we have out and are collecting data through Sunday. So if you haven't had a chance to fill it out, and it came to you, please, um, please take a minute and do that, we're certainly enjoying the write-in comments. As we always do, um, and we are, we're happy that we have next week's meeting, because we're going to put in, um. We're going to tabulate that data and feedback, um, also, we have begun working with the SBREA. I meet with them on a regular basis and, um, they're doing their own survey of the faculty and staff and, and. We collaborated a little bit on some of those questions to get any concerns, comments that they might have, so hopefully I'll have a combination. Of all of that data, um, plus some conversations that we're having as part of the, um, negotiations group. Um, and we'll come back, but we'll have to hear what, what comes of his meeting tomorrow and see if there's any, um, votes, but. Uh, as usual, we're kind of, um. Goes against everything that I like to do, right? We try to be proactive and I feel like I'm reactive every minute of the week. Um, so, um, we will, uh, we, we all believe, and we've said this before, that. We know what's best for kids and we want it to be safe and we want to be able to do things appropriately, but we do think that kids should get back into school. Um, when we, when we can make it happen, um. We're going to have to see what happens here and we'll follow the appropriate guidelines and we'll make our adjustments as a group and. Um, we'll work with our full community before we do anything and make sure everybody understands what our plan is. And the school committee will obviously have to vote on what it is, um, that we put forward for, uh, the next version. Of, um, the reopening plan, um, so I don't know what that information is, but I hope to have much more to report. Next Thursday, um, it's happening faster and more furiously than we anticipated, but. We will keep everybody posted and we'll do what we've done before and we'll make our decisions, um. As much as we can locally, um, and, and what's best for our communities, involving everyone. I see hands everywhere, so.
Beth, I got a, uh, just a P, I was gone most of the day, but while I was on the road, I got a, a piece of information that came across that. Basically said that the, uh, the, the DESC was going before the Board of Education. Was that tomorrow? To, to get some, some rulings on some of these things that they're trying to get, like the, you know, what days count and so forth and so on?
Yes, that was my report, that's what I said, the commissioner got.
So, yeah, that, that was what I caught just a little bit of on the radio today as I was driving, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Carrie Anne?
Um, thank you for recognizing my hand, um, uh. Sorry, I just got distracted for a moment, um, thinking about raised hands, um. Some of the things that I heard, Beth, regarding the commissioner's statement were, um. Mildly a- aggressive about some potential, um. New authorities that he's seeking to be granted in order, for the next three months, in order to. Force school districts, um, and be able to judge if they, um, if their learning time counts. And it made me really nervous that he was doing this and, um, i- it did say that there was going to be an opportunity for. Public comment, um, but I couldn't find where the, that public comment would go to and, um. I, I guess I'm just wanting to voice that I, it, it doesn't make me feel comfortable that this commissioner is seeking out greater authority. To force school districts to be making decisions based on what he thinks is right and that. This is all yet again without a rollout for vaccines for our teachers and our students. So if there are opportunities that you hear of to be able to voice those concerns, um. I would really like to know about them, so this way I can speak to whoever, whatever channels are appropriate.
So I will say, um, just know that, um, every organization that I, I. Am a member of, which is the Association of School Superintendents, School Business Officials, um. The, uh, Mars Group, uh, every group that you could possibly think of has already issued a statement of, of. A call to action about, um. Making sure that, uh, we have a voice and that we have a way to, um, communicate our concerns. Prior to, um. Someone laying down, um, some directives, let's say that. I think that also came, which has prompted some response, um. Well, I had written to the, um, advocacy, the output, I don't know what it's called this week, uh. Uh, I'll put an advocacy group here and said, um, I think we should write to our local legislators and say. Um, please get those vaccinated who want to be vaccinated. I want to be clear that not everybody wants to be vaccinated and we need to understand that. And we can't control that, um, however, if you want to be vaccinated, you should have that opportunity before, um. So, but I think there's already a response to that, as you can see, um, so I know, um. You know, in Connecticut, I live in Connecticut, my daughter's a teacher in Connecticut, tomorrow they have, um, a fully remote learning day and every teacher in Connecticut. Is being vaccinated, so, um, there are ways to do this that, um, show support and, um. And understanding for educators in the positions they're in, so I think we as a committee, um. Uh, the school committee themselves could advocate on behalf of our teaching staff and should, um, every article that I wrote, uh. That I usually write in my monthly, I put in there, please think about, um. Advocating on behalf of educators as we head back into full in-person learning. I, I think all of those things are important. I think we should get back safely to full in-person learning, and I think, um, people should have the opportunity to be vaccinated, so, um. So I think it is concerning, I think people are asking him to slow down and take some feedback, um, but. There are some, some conversations around that, um. You know, the little early parts of the data that we've seen, um, people say, well, why are you saying, um. What you said, the full in-person or fully remote, because those were the options we were given by the commissioner, none of these are. Our suggestions, right? This is what we were told are going to be the options, that's why we're asking our communities that way, um. It has been rumored that hybrid would not be an approved option, so when people are writing in, well, I'm going to stay with hybrid, that's not going to be an option, so. I, I hear what they're saying, but it's not going to be an option potentially, so. We're just trying to collect the data, see what people say and be prepared based on, originally, we were going to have maybe like a we- a week. Turnaround time and we're trying to be proactive so we can plan, that's, that's the stance we're currently taking, so. Uh, you know, much more to come, I think, I'm happier that he's going earlier, so I have a sense of what might. What might come of it and, and where people are, are weighing in on how supportive, uh, are. You know, is the board of his position, um. you know, is the board of his position. Um, and that'll tell us a lot. I think Bonnie.
Oh, yeah, um, Bonnie?
Um, thank you. Beth, I agree with you a th- uh, you know, a thousand percent on getting our educators vaccinated. We haven't met yet in any other way. I acted as one person on the school committee and have contacted our, our Adam and Smitty and um, Berkshire Health System that did an incredible job of setting up the vaccinations at Du Bois. They could get, if they did the same thing, um, as of the eleventh educators can log on to get appointments. Anybody who's gone through the horror of trying to get an appointment knows that this will be completely crazy. And if they can agree, let Berkshire um, Health System run it, do the entire county of teachers in the two sites they use on the next three Saturdays, at least they would get first vaccines into everybody's arms. We, it's going to be a horror if everybody starts, four hundred thousand teachers in the state of Massachusetts starts vying for vaccines. If anything that we could do to advocate for an orderly way, so our teachers don't have to be juggling teaching and trying to get an appointment. Beth, I support you and I hope others will take the opportunity to put that pressure forward. Heather Barbieri, who set it up through uh, Fairview, did an unbelievable job. Anybody who's, I mean, I got vaccinated there, Dennis, you did. Others, they did a phenomenal job. And if we could help make this happen for the whole county, um, we should do whatever we need to do to advocate for that. So I just acted as an individual. I guarantee I did not speak on behalf of the whole school committee. I said I was a member of the school committee, you know, unless we want to take a further action. I think we have to support our teachers that way. And Beth, I'm glad you're taking the lead on it.
Jenna?
Uh, me? I thought Jeffrey was on first. Um, is it, um, and I guess this is for you, Beth, but is there any possibility that it can be in, in support of what Bonnie says to facilitate this? Is there any possibility of being able to organize it for the teachers in the, in our district? Can that be done?
Well, I, I think it could be done, but I think it's, I, I'm not in control of that. I think we're going to need people from, uh, you know, higher up to say, we're going to, I, I think they should have a very similar plan to what they've done in other um, communities. And I think the pressure is headed that way. So I wouldn't be surprised if we hear that they'll have a, uh, I've heard them talk about it now in vaccination day, but you know, this is backwards, in my opinion, a little bit behind the, you know, it, it's not as um, proactively thought out as I think it should have been because a lot of the other work, to be fair, um, that he has done, he has done other research and not just him, his team has done other research and um, you know, the letter that he originally circulated with sixty-six physicians, has over three hundred physicians and there's World Health. There's a lot of documentation out there that might indicate um, um, that this is an appropriate step. However, I think it should have been, um, it should have been planned that this is another phase of that, just like other communities did. So I think there's a lot of pressure heading that way. I, I think all we can do is advocate and ask. I, I don't think anybody right now, I mean, I saw Heather Barbieri last night. She's doing a great job, but she doesn't have anything to give us yet, right? So we have to wait until um, the distribution gets there and there's some plan. But the plan can't be get it, try to get on and get an appointment because for those of us who've been trying to do that for several weeks.
Exactly.
We don't have any hours of the day to be sitting there while we're teaching. So it can't be that.
So, uh, we as a committee, can we um, write one of those nice letters like the one that was written the last time? And to requesting something, can we do that? Does that make, does it make sense?
To make a motion, Dennis?
Make a motion?
You should make a motion.
Okay, I move that we write a letter requesting that um, vaccines for teachers be organized for the group. Is that, is that good enough?
Second, let's a word for a smip it. Um, would you be uh, amenable to? I think we, we should write, would you be amenable if we address this letter to Smitty, Adam Hines, Governor Baker, the Commissioner, Lieutenant Governor Pledo, really put some pressure on saying, um, we um, want to get back to school as quickly as possible, but we need to be mindful of our teachers and uh, community members and that we request that the state mobilize vaccinations for faculty and staff to uh, before schools are let in and to make it easy for them to get, get these um, vaccines should they choose to.
A short form, if, if I might, would suggest say prioritize educators in the next patch or whatever, however you want to say it, but so they don't have to get online and try to do it, prioritize them onsite or in a local area.
Exactly. Uh, I see uh, Danell's hand because I'm thinking this is the job for the committee, uh, the uh, a- advocacy subcommittee to possibly craft a letter for us?
Uh, yeah, we can add that on to our long list of future agenda items, but I had an idea, um, as a, as a healthcare worker and a Berkshire Health Systems employee, in the beginning, we were the first phase. If we can get Berkshire Health Systems on board, what, we didn't even have to schedule anything. It was scheduled for us. We just emailed our, they did it internally through our internal employee website, but we could just say, you know, give all the emails or the names of teachers that are interested in a vaccine and then there you go. And then they just schedule it. And they had at Berkshire Medical Center, I mean, it was, it was phenomenal. You walk in, say hi, give them your name, and it was literally fifteen minutes. Um, and they did mass amounts of vaccines. So I don't know if there's, yeah, maybe writing a letter suggests you get, I mean, there are the major health system in our whole county, they, they need to, I think, step up and help and do something like that. Um.
That's exactly right. That's what I meant when I made the motion, that it should be organized that way. Teachers shouldn't have to make individual calls.
Yeah.
Um, Winette?
I need clarification on what the motion is, because I don't.
Yeah.
Dennis, you want to, Dennis, do you want to restate your motion and then I can um, accept your change to?
No. Okay, I, I, I don't know what I said before.
Or maybe Beth, the air phrase, and then.
What?
Beth is well, I'm fearing to help you out, Dennis.
You, you're, you're talking about a letter of advocacy on behalf of the teachers to have an organized vaccination process for those who are interested prior to a return to full in-person learning.
Yes.
Can we add that it's directed to the parties?
Yeah, yeah.
Should we include Berkshire Health Systems CEO?
I'm confused again.
Don't. I gave it to you. I just gave it to you.
But then Dennis on the phone.
He's just saying who, he's just for who. Who, who we send it to, who we send it to.
That is not part of the motion. A second on the motion before we go on discussing this?
I will accept Genesis' changes as stated by Beth. Now I have another question to discuss that. Do we need to add on um, specific audience that we're going to be writing this to? And aside from all the political figures, do we need to send it to also the CEO of Berkshire Health Systems?
I don't think it needs to vote. This is needs to be part of the motion. Let's, let's, let's vote that we want to, uh, let's take a vote that we want to be known as advocating for this to happen. And then I think we, we won't have a problem getting it out to the appropriate people. Uh, Dennis, did you want to add to that? Dennis, your hand's up. Did you want to say?
Okay, yeah, what, 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 what I was going to suggest is that I was not aware, Danell, that you worked for Berkshire Health Systems. Berkshire Health, Health Systems has been running the ones over at the Du Bois School, right?
That's what we said.
I mean, that, you know, what, why don't we just want to put forth a proposal that says, look, we would like to establish using Du Bois School and our school, for example, because we have the same amount of space that they, that they're using at Du Bois, that they could use it here, but Du Bois, they already know how to do it at Du Bois and everything else, but for, 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 to, to very specifically have a day that, that, that all of the uh, Berkshire Hills uh, staff and our staff can go there and get their vaccine shots. Period. Make, make a very direct, specific ask and say, hey, this Mr. Governor, Mr. Senator, Mr. Representative, we want this. Especially if in view of the, 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 the Board of, of Education is going to lean over and give way to the, to, to, to elementary and secondary education and force us to go back to school. Okay, so let's, let's, let's actually ask for a specific thing like that. That would be my recommendation.
Okay, um, got it. I, 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 I want the motion to read the way it was stated by Beth. I think that's, for me, that's good enough. I don't think that we need to be that specific. That, so therefore, I don't accept your change, Dennis. That's it.
Okay, so let's uh, vote on uh, Genesis' motion. Uh, which gives, uh, does not specify the method in which these are delivered, but demands that they are. All right, Art?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Uh, Danell?
Yes.
Uh, Jenna?
That was Jenna, I think.
Yeah, Janice?
Okay, thank you, Dennis. Yes.
Dennis is yes also.
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Dennis, you just voted yes. And Bonnie?
Yes.
And Jane? Yeah, okay, so, um.
Jane?
I'm just wondering, we got to get somebody to write the left.
Yes, Jen- Jane, my hand is up. I also write a draft for the next um, CEO meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Daniel? Daniel?
Perfect, yep.
I'll write the draft and then you guys chop it apart.
Be meeting uh, in time for us to uh, vote on the next, um, Thursday next week.
Right.
Great, perfect. When, yeah. Okay, so now here we are for a drum roll.
I just, I, I just don't know if I can be that excited. Everybody here knows I've been trying to get my elderly mother-in-law an appointment.
Yeah.
Okay, for a vaccine. And tonight, while we're sitting on this meeting, a whole bunch of appointments came due open and I got a bunch of texts and I got my mother-in-law. So, um, anyway. You're welcome. My uh, report is there. I, this time of year, you know that I've been trying to give you information that kind of helps guide the budget process. And I talked in it, in this report about least restrictive environment, which we call LRE, which is just a way to support our children and students in being in their um, community schools. Um, those students that have particular learning needs. So I talked a little bit about that. I talked about transition to post-secondary programming, whether that be college or career or something else. And, and the, how, the agencies with whom we partner, which I listed out there. I talked a little bit about Circuit Breaker, um, and that funding source and special education increments, which is a simu- a formula that is used. Circuit Breaker is for our high need students. Um, there's a foundation formula and any um, services and amounts of um, money that goes toward their programming that's beyond uh, the foundation formula. We get reimbursed currently at seventy-five percent. The same formula is used for special education increments. That is for students who receive special education services who are school choice into our programs. Um, however, uh, the sending school district is charged one hundred percent of those charges in addition to the foundation amount for school choice, which is five thousand, as you know. Um, so I just wanted to give you that information. I'm just going to put that out there. If you read the report, if you have any questions based on what I just said, I'm happy to answer them. But um, it's just, it's just a mean, a way of giving you more information.
Appreciate it. Um, Bonnie, do you have a question?
Yes, um, just Sandy, thanks for the report, but I have a question. What's the status in terms of um, our meeting on the early childhood programs?
So that, we're looking to do that a little bit later on. We have to get through this process. Right now, we're in the middle of the registration process for early childhood. We're talking about our new screening process, which I think I mentioned. So we've got some things to do that are like brass tacks to get to our children in the community right now. We've been gathering census data. We're, we're getting everything together. So I feel that this is going to be closer to summer, maybe a little bit closer to that before we meet, but um, it's out there. I've been talking to the, the committee, which is, you know, comprised of our early childhood educators. Okay, so everybody's on board. It's just, we have some steps to, to get there right now. Everybody's very busy right now and we want to be able to get it, give it our full focus. Um, other thing I just wanted to mention is Special Olympics is typically held on the first Wednesday in May and we haven't gotten details, but I, I'm hoping that we have some things in place and I'll share that with all of you because I hope you can attend and support our athletes.
And I want to publicly thank you for the help you gave me in writing the article for the Sheffield Times.
Been happy to do it. Thank you for doing it.
You're welcome.
Okay, our final item is, anyone want to express interest of future agenda items? You can always email me or Beth. It has things that are to you, so we make sure that the things that are on your mind get discussed. And also, please don't hesitate to contact me if uh, you need any help. Uh, I especially feel like the new members deserve a lot of attention because we didn't have the conferences past fall to help you jumpstart your uh, illustrious career on this committee. So I want to help you be as uh, comfortable and informed as you can be and as powerful as you can be. All right, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, Bonnie, uh, roll call vote. Art?
Yep.
Jeff?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Danell?
Yes.
Uh, Jenna?
Yes.
And the other Jenna?
Yes.
Uh, Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Jane, yes, thank you all very much.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night. Good night.
Bye.
Good night.